Everyone, thank you for being with us for our May 16th Commissioner briefing meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the agenda or any other items that anyone would like to add to the agenda for our meeting today? All right, then we will follow the agenda as it's listed. Are there any questions about any items on the agenda for our meeting at 5:00 today? All right, terrific. All right, so the first item on our agenda is an quarterly update on the CDBG NR. And Matt Cable is here to help us out with this item.
Good afternoon. As a primer, the grantor of the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural and Economic Development Division, as part of this grant, requires us to provide a quarterly update in a public setting so that our community can follow this grant from beginning to end. So the grant that the county has received is a $400,000 grant. The purposes of the grant are to provide home repairs to 12 to 24 low and moderate-income households within Buncombe County. We are seeking through a process, a nonprofit subrecipient, to administer the program and the activity. We plan to provide kind of this overview as we move through the process and with each quarterly update. This is basically the list of activities that the county will need to undertake to deliver the project and arrive at closeout. At this point, we have submitted all the required award documents to the state, and we are in the midst of an issued request for project proposals. So again, seeking a subrecipient that's qualified to provide the grant program activity. So there will be a number of steps as we move forward, and we'll provide you kind of with the update of where we are in each subsequent quarterly report. So since we are in the middle of an RFP process, we thought it would be pertinent to highlight, for the benefit of the board and for the public, what we're looking for in terms of a subrecipient. So an ideal subrecipient would have had relevant community development block grant experience so that they're familiar with the federal funds that are flowing through the state and to the county. They would have the ability to deliver a compliant project. Again, having experience with federal dollars typically reveals that you have that capacity. That would be seeking low levels of administrative support relative to the overall project, so they will be proposing a budget. And admin funds are permissible within the grant, but we would be looking for as much project delivery as possible. That they have a recruitment, marketing, and outreach plan that focuses on equity, so we're asking them to provide that as part of the application process. That they have a waitlist and a plan for maintaining the waitlist for individuals seeking repairs. And ideally, they would already have a list of pre-identified units that might be able to be selected. So as I mentioned, we are in the middle of an active request for proposals process that opened in April. We offered a pre-application meeting, which was recorded and made available after the fact as well, for anyone who was seeking details about the application process. Applications are due later this month, on May 23rd, at which point we'll begin a review of proposed applications and undertake an internal selection process. And we are hopeful that we will have a viable proposal and set of proposals to evaluate, and that we're able to get to contract issuance by June. And then, we have included, just for your benefit, a more detailed summary. I won't necessarily go into all of these details about the grant, and you've probably seen slides like this similarly for the CDBGCV grant in the past, so we did include that. The one thing that I'll mention is, this grant is expected to close by June of 2025, so we have some time to complete the activity. But given the number of repairs that we're proposing to conduct, we do have to be expedient and continue to move the process forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this grant.
All right, Matt, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Community Index Map. And Dr. Lee Creighton and Dr. Noriel Armstrong are here to help us out with this.
All right. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be with you all this afternoon to introduce you all to a project that we've been working on. This is a collaboration between Strategy and Innovation, our GIS team, and our IT department, as well as the Equity Office. I want to acknowledge, Dr. Armstrong will be joining me in this presentation, but there's two folks in the audience, Heather Parkinson and Jim Webb, that I want to specifically call out, and our colleague Jean Hume from IT, in their efforts to present to you all today this project and the work that they've contributed to it. So we're going to walk through the Community Index Map. We're going to talk about what it is, how it was developed, and how it can be utilized. And essentially, what this project is aimed to do is to really help us understand how experiences vary across our county and communities across our county. Like many places, we know that Buncombe County, there are, it's a geographic area where lived experience varies. The drivers for that might be all sorts of things. For one example, with income, we know that there's areas in the county where there's high concentrations of wealth, and we also know that approximately 14% of our population is also experiencing poverty. So this index is aiming to help us visualize differences in experience, and ultimately to assist us in developing better understandings of our community that will get us to a place where we can better address needs. So this is the index. It is a map. You can see that there are various shades of blue, and I'll talk about what these indicate. So the dark blue areas indicate high concentrations of community members who might not have access to resources or essential resources. Those resources might not be available at all, or the resources that are available might not align with the community's needs. The paler yellow areas represent places where community members are more likely to have access to resources, or are places where resources better align with community needs. We'll see in a minute, the index is interactive, and the map also displays demographic information about the population living in the area, helping to shed light on racial and ethnic disparities across communities in the county. So the index is comprised of nine census factors, and it's presented on a block group level. The block group is the smallest geographic unit that's published by the Census Bureau and the American Community Census Survey. So this is a snapshot of our data set behind the index. It is 2019 data, and there are 154 block groups in the county. We chose census data specifically because we wanted to be able to update the index, and we know that the data points would not shift in terms of what would be available to us. However, there are delays with the 2020 census data, and we are still waiting for these data to come out. But our intention is to keep this updated, this index updated, so that we can watch how our communities change across these factors over time. So the index, it's essentially a composite score of nine factors. We've taken these, and we've ranked them across the county's block groups. So what we're looking at are median household income, percent of households below poverty, percent of the population 21 and older without a high school diploma or equivalent, percent of households on food assistance, rent as a percentage of income, mortgage percent of income 30 or greater. And then we have two age factors, population less than 18 and greater than 65. So in addition to the nine factors that I just reviewed, when you click on a location in the map, you will see those, but you'll also see some additional information about the population living in these areas. And we call these context factors. And what those include are population size, language spoken in household, race, ethnicity, family and non-family household poverty status. So we developed this index with a range of stakeholders in mind, so from internal use with our county departments, interested community members, or organizations outside of county government. And our thinking here being that if we all understand the conditions of communities across the county, we can implement strategies aimed at helping all residents thrive. So the Community Index is available, and it currently has been used by departments. You'll hear a little bit about it in the comprehensive plan later this afternoon. But it's also going to be made available publicly via the Equity and Human Rights Office So what we've done is we've created the index, it's a dashboard, and so you'll see the live dashboard here in a minute. But we have organized the dashboard around the county's strategic plan. So at the bottom of the dashboard, you'll see there's tabs that align with the community focus areas of the plan. And on each of these tabs, we've made layers of data available that you can turn on and off on the upper right-hand corner of the map. So we also have the Community Index tab, and on this specific tab, we have made several layers of data available that relate to equity. And so those include the Asheville redlining map, the percent of residents in the block group who are black, and the percent of residents in the block group who are Hispanic and Latino. For the four focus area tabs, layers were selected in consultation with county staff who are leading the efforts to achieve the goals outlined in the focus areas of the strategic plan. So these were selected specifically to help inform programmatic decisions around those goals. So for resident well-being, we have three layers available, public transportation routes, recreational assets in Buncombe County, and then also a heat map of bookings into the detention facility based off the address of the person entering the facility. For environmental and energy stewardship, we have the count of solar installations, composting sites, conserved land, and weatherization projects. For educated and capable community, we're actually pulling out two of the index factors to look at individually, and that is the percent of the population 21 or older without a high school diploma or equivalent, and population over 65. But we're also showing the location of early childhood education centers, as well as the library's preschool outreach program sites. And then for vibrant economy, there's three layers. We're showing the percent of the population below poverty as a standalone layer, but also to areas, the layers are areas not served by broadband, and then septic complaints. So we're actually going to take a closer look at the map now. Bear with me. Hopefully, my monitor will catch up here. There it goes. Sorry about that. Okay. So what we're looking at here is... This is not how it worked when we demoed this earlier. I apologize. So what we're looking at here is the Educated and Capable Community map. And what I have on here is the layer of childcare centers. So the yellow dots represent a center, and then the pink dot represents a center in a family home. And so if we zoom over here, as a hypothetical, we were looking for areas where we might want to look at expanding access to childcare. If, we see there is a lone dot over here of a childcare center. And what we can do is click on these block groups around it to understand the demographics of the population living in that area. We see these are darker areas on the index map, so indicating that there might be needs that are not being met in the community. Both, when you click on these block groups, you'll see additional information about the block group. And so when we scroll down, we might notice that there's a pretty high percentage of the population under the age of 18. That's actually true for both of these block groups. And this block group that's to the west of Pisgah Highway here is also a block group where we have a high percentage of the population living in poverty, as well as a median income that's far below that of the county median income. And so this might be an area that if we were interested in expanding access to childcare, early education, this might be an area that we might want to look at and explore further. The second example that we have is looking at vibrant economy. And so again, one of the layers that we have made available here are areas not served by broadband. So this area up here on the northern border of the county, this is ranked number 140 on the index out of 154. So again, an area where there might be high concentration of folks who don't have access to essential resources. When we click on this area, we see that it is an area with a high percentage of the population over the age of 18, under the age of 18, so school-aged children. We also know that this is also an area of people experiencing poverty, around 30%, and most of that, a lot of that poverty is happening within individuals in family households. So if we were looking to see where we would want to maybe expand broadband access, this might be a place that we would like to look. And so those are just a couple of examples that we've prepared for today in terms of how this might be utilized. I also now want to invite Dr. Armstrong up to speak about some potential utilization from her perspective in the Equity Office.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So Lee just did a great job explaining the Community Index Map, which I talked about last time, and just wanted to share four examples of how, from the equity perspective, this Community Index Map can be very useful. So regarding the open space bond, we feel that in discussing greenways and passive recreation, the Community Index Map will be helpful to see what areas could greatly benefit from added greenways and passive recreation. It will also show communities that we need to go to and to have conversations with to learn what they would like to see in their neighborhood regarding passive recreation, and also just informing them about what greenways are and how they could be helpful to their community. The second way is the Equity Impact Analysis Tool, and we are reviewing that currently. And so the Community Index Map has a wealth of knowledge about the community or about the county for a variety of lenses. And when considering budget, process, and expansion needs, departments can utilize the Community Index Map to survey past and current conditions, assess needs, and apply the information as a resource to completing the Equity Analysis, Impact Analysis Tool to help standardize equitable and inclusive information and practices by departments serving the larger community. It could also be helpful during the reparations IFA work. The Community Index Map has those layers that Lee talked about that are aligned with the impact-focused areas, and that can be added to the map for a great resource for the IFA groups that are collecting data and viewing data to assess harm, to make recommendations about those harms for African-Americans in this county. There's rich data there, and it can create avenues to start conversations that haven't been had and can influence how the county moves forward with various projects. And lastly, another way that we see the use of the Community Index Map is just in general potential for general community needs. So the information is a tool that can, once explained, I want to be very clear about that, once explained how Lee explained it here, to the community, it can provide them with specific tools and focus data on the different areas affected by redlining, community needs for education and health centers, and so much more. And so education is a big part of what I believe leads to equity, and so the Community Index Map will be on our Equity webpage, and so those in the community can go and get information and learn and find out what they don't know so they can be more informed. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is that all the information? Okay. All right, Commissioners, any questions?
I'll just say thank you. I'm very excited about this useful tool to see how this helps us with our work and being able to track this data as we proceed. Thank you to your entire team.
Just echoing that, this is really extraordinary work. I'm excited to be able to use it.
I want to say the same thing, and also, I think it's a great opportunity for our partners across Buncombe County to have access to this data too, so that they can look at how they can best work with us and the people who are in need of these kinds of services across Buncombe County. So excellent work, y'all. Thanks so much.
All right. Thanks for the great update, great information. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the City-City Interlocal Agreement for an Airport Parcel, and Michael Frey will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, they even have visual aids today, so if I could ask Nick to pull up that first slide. This is to get us oriented. Do you see the airport there in the middle of the screen? To the right, up and down is I-26, and the circle there is the Minkels property. If you're leaving the airport drive and you're at the stoplight ready to head back to town, it's through that patch of woods to the left of that stoplight. So if you go to the next one, what Minkels, Minkels in that facility is of the Electric Luxe facility, and they bought this piece of property you see up there, 2.91 acres from the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority last fall, in anticipation of expanding the footprint of the rectangle building you saw on the previous slide up into this new parcel there. So they're fixing to borrow a lot of money, and for those lending purposes, they've approached this city planning first, then county planning, to see who has jurisdiction over this site for the construction and development, for planning and zoning, et cetera. So if we look at the next one, please, Nick. All the Airport Authority property that I know of that's in Buncombe County, because some of it spills over into Henderson County, is within the Asheville city limits. So several years ago, back in 2012, the legislature decided to pull all the planning regulation authority away from the city of Asheville and give it to Buncombe County, effective upon the time that the county could file zoning maps for that property, which the county did. So that created a split jurisdiction issue we have now. And Nick, go to the last slide. You'll see that green, darker green-blue color up there at the top is about 2.91 acres within county zoning jurisdiction. And then you see the rest of that parcel, the lighter blue color, is all about 25 acres within the city planning and zoning jurisdiction. So the legislature has in Chapter 160D, if regulation jurisdiction is with more than one local government, those local governments, with the consent of the landowner, can agree to put exclusive jurisdiction in one local government or the other. From the county's point of view, and the city legal and planning also agree, since the county planning people have no real direct access to that 2.91 acres, and county planning and permitting people aren't really situated to enforce and interpret city zoning, it makes sense to let all planning and zoning jurisdiction for that 28-acre parcel to be within the city of Asheville. So that's what the interlocal agreement would do. And what we hope to do is that with your approval to put this on the June 6th agenda, and you tell me whether you want it on new business or consent, but what I'll have to do is put together a resolution to approve this interlocal agreement as written, and then the city will take it to their council for approval on June 13th. And then that would put exclusive jurisdiction for the parcel, which is all within the city of Asheville, within the city of Asheville planning and zoning jurisdiction.
Michael, is the intent of the developer, or generally the development, to recombine those two tax parcels into one?
Exactly. So 2.9 acre conveyance was accomplished, there was a recombination parcel. So that's why, you see, there's no red line between those, between the darker color and the lighter color up on the screen, because it is one combined parcel.
Oh, it's already occurred?
Yes.
Okay.
That creates a split jurisdiction issue.
Okay.
Yes.
It's already a split zone piece of property?
Yes, sir.
And all of its, and you mentioned access to, its physical access is all from the south?
Fanning Bridge Road through the mother parcel of the Minkels site. Exactly.
I'm fine with it being on the consent agenda.
Yeah. Same. Okay. I will do that. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks for the update. All right, the next item is the Opioid Settlement Planning and Fatal Overdose Update.
Hello, Commissioners. Good to see you all again. Victoria Riker, the Behavioral Health Manager. And I'll also be joined by Tiffany Ahnacho to talk about some parts of our presentation So today, I'll be sharing a brief, high-level overview of our strategic planning for opioid settlement funds, and along with Tiffany and Ahnacho, we will share recommendations around Commissioners' ask to be laser-focused on addressing the alarming fatal overdose increases in our community. So part of our steering committee kicked off in September with a multidisciplinary body of over 45 stakeholders to begin collaborative strategic planning for the use of opioid settlement funds. Members included licensed clinicians, a physician, emergency services, law enforcement, and detention center officials, community advocates, and most importantly, individuals with lived experience. Steering Committee members were invited to join task-specific workgroups to discuss research and design the following outputs to inform our planning efforts and recommendations. Engaging diverse stakeholders and those with lived experiences included targeted stakeholder feedback sessions and surveys. We were able to gather over 1,100 surveys with approximately 43% from those identifying as a person with lived experience, and 20% identifying as a loved one of someone impacted by substance use. This planning process has opened us up to look at additional strategies that are listed within the North Carolina Memorandum of Agreement around opioid settlement funds. And as you all noticed, we have our final event on May 18th that will be livestreamed on our public input page, and this also meets a requirement to have an annual meeting open to the public and including our municipalities. So there has been that significant amount of engagement over the last six months to gather community perspectives of substance use. The team heard from those with lived experience, providers, and those on the front lines saving lives. Here are some of the perspectives they shared, and these will inform our strategies going forward. As you can see, the increasing prevalence of use of lethality of substances ranked very high on the list of concerns. As such, information shared by the Commissioners and our next steps are aligned to these community perspectives. The data shows that we still have work to reaching and increasing access to communities that our institutions have failed to connect with. During our root cause analysis, the steering committee identified high-level themes that contribute to the likelihood that someone could develop a substance use disorder and/or face substance use-related harm. These themes can impact someone from early childhood all the way through recovery, and without intentional efforts to mitigate these, we will continue to have challenges in attaining healthy outcomes. While individual experiences vary, and of course, each has some distinct needs that vary dependent on our unique experiences, the core truth or theme here is an experience of unmet needs, underlying root causes that may activate substance use for some and lead to addiction. Per the settlements MOA, Memorandum of Agreement, this workgroup was tasked with identifying measures to monitor in order to gauge progress towards our shared vision. While there were pages of possible measures, they determined the following to be crucial for understanding this topic over time. Social determinants of health is grouped into five different domains, and all have a relation to the list of root causes of substance use and related harm. All of these indicators will be assessed through a result All of these indicators will be assessed through results-based accountability measures, process, quality, and outcome, and disaggregated by demographics. And so based on what we've been hearing from our community and the ask of our commissioners to be laser-focused on fatal overdose, we have a recommendation that is a dual approach. We want to prioritize life-saving and harm-reducing measures today, but we also want to look at opportunities to invest in prevention and longer-term planning to address the root causes of substance use. I will be going in more detail into that left arm, the prioritizing life-saving in these next couple of slides. And so part of this work has been organizing ourselves as county staff to really figure out how we can bring effective measures, we can understand how we're responding in our community, how do we increase the public awareness, how do we coordinate our services within the county and within our community, and then how are we deploying those resources that are available in an effective way. So this group of people that are gathering together are working on those additional items, that expansion to MAT and those acute response resources. And so what we have is a unified command that includes our county manager's office, sheriff's office, emergency services, and public health. And they are helping us with identifying objectives and things that we will implement. And then the different sections within this framework includes the equity section, and this is to ensure that we are addressing disparities through intentional outreach and education, partnering with BIPOC-led organizations, and centering programs from BIPOC perspectives. The Joint Information Center, in partnership with Equity, works towards increasing consistent messaging, providing education, and creating a feedback loop. The operations section uses boots-on-the-ground implementation, being unified with municipalities, community organizations, and treatment service providers. The data unit will focus on creating a unified reporting of data across partners, using data to create a dashboard to see what we are doing is impactful, apply spike alerts, and be able to pivot to address upcoming trends and increase response in the areas most in need. It is this data that will support the development of a plan and allow our logistics section to understand where resources need to go and deploying those resources to the right places at the right time. So this means being able to understand what is the capacity of our service providers and being able to adjust to meet the demand. And then lastly, our finance section will ensure that we are able to meet our identified targets with the current funds available and identify additional funding resources to fill possible gaps. And so I'll let Tiffany stand in to just talk a little bit more in detail about our data collection, communication, and equity.
Good afternoon, everyone. So the next slide is focused on improving the use of information to inform our response. Victoria had kind of talked high-level about why that's important, the need to make sure that we're looking holistically across all of our services to really make sure we're getting resources to the right places at the right time. We have a lot of resources that are addressing this issue, but they're not in a unified and coordinated effort, and we can't pinpoint exactly where resources need to go at one given time. So what this process is doing is working towards making sure that we're preventing overdose with real-time data, responding quickly in the event of a overdose, avoid the loss of life, and then channel the resources. Where we are now is getting all of our stakeholders together, we're identifying what the data points are, such as where are the hotspots in communities? One of the things that we do note about our data is making sure that it's reliable and consistent, and we have several data reporting systems. And also, especially when it comes to our overdose data, the toxicology is in the official reports, have to, of course, go to the state, takes time to verify that information to determine that it's overdose. So we can't rely on that data as real-time information to drive our decision-making. So we're thinking about other ways to quickly inform us on how many overdoses are occurring in our community. That's working with our hospital system, that's working with our local MAT providers, that's working with, of course, EMS and the other fire departments and first responders that are responding, that are providing Narcan. I think what's interesting to note historically are federal laws like HIPAA and CFR 45 have been restrictive, but we found ways to make sure that we are in compliance with state law, but able to share data. So we're working on a business case for our data so that way we can share data on a level that's impactful for our community, and we are in compliance with federal and state law. As it relates to community awareness education, we are also rapidly building out this approach as well. We have set up our Joint Information Command Center where we're unifying our message. So be on the lookout real soon for some public awareness campaign. We are getting folks with lived experience or have been impacted willing to share their story, excuse me, in a way that's authentic. Our messaging would include "This is Us," so recognizing that this opioid epidemic affects all of us. We will make sure that we're providing Narcan training to community and understanding the importance of Narcan and how it can be beneficial in saving lives. Then our last approach is really demystifying treatment and de-stigmatizing substance use so people are able to identify if a loved one's impacted by use to get them into treatment quickly. We're also building trust in communities, and so that is our next strategy as it relates to our equity-building approaches. I think I talked last briefing about some equity challenges, about mistrust in government, and also our healthcare systems where communities of color normally don't seek treatment, but also our programs can actually be very restrictive. We're doing a lot of screening-out processes. We learned that in our homelessness work as well. So how do we screen in folks for treatment and make sure they feel included and a part of the process? Also partnering with BIPOC-led organizations that are working in health and can connect with the community. We are training one of our, I think we had a training last week on Narcan for our community health workers and our community navigators that are already in our community engagement markets. So Public Health partnered with our CATE team, they provide Narcan training. And so a part of that Narcan training is also giving them information so that way they can go back to their communities and share the message about substance use and getting access to treatment. Of course, being intentional in our outreach and our messaging, I mentioned the slogan "This is Us" as a part of that campaign to make sure that we're telling folks stories that have been impacted through a lens of cultural humility and inclusivity. So if it's in a language access, make sure the messaging is in different languages, making sure it's representative of different people and with lived experience. And then centering the program from a BIPOC perspective and understanding what cultural needs are when people are engaging in treatment. And lastly, what will benefit us all is just reducing barriers to accessing treatment. And I'll turn it back over to Victoria.
And so talking about increasing access to services, we know our community paramedics has been doing a lot of work in our community in linking people who have experienced an overdose or at high risk of an overdose to treatment services. And we've seen great success with that hand, you know, kind of really giving that warm hand, helping that person overcome some of those barriers. And so what we're recommending is that we look at how can we expand this work and not just be for someone who just had an overdose or at high risk, but perhaps partnering with the Mission Hospital Emergency Department. They are also working on how can they implement medications for opioid use disorder within the emergency department. We also have been in conversations with the detention facility. As you all know, that we are providing medications for opioid use disorder and linking people to treatment, but sometimes folks are coming into the detention facility and leaving before they are able to get further screening and linkage to that support. And so there's another opportunity for people who are interested, community paramedics could meet them, perhaps induct them. We know that people who are leaving the detention facility, right, higher risk of an overdose. And so how can we, again, provide them those options, reduce that barriers to access to care? And we are currently already partnering with the Asheville Housing Authority communities and meeting with folks in there and different other departments and educating folks about the resources and naloxone. And so really having a more formalized process on linking folks to the treatment that are as available. As well as our social services, 62% of our youth were brought into foster care last year because of parental substance use and maltreatment. And when a youth is removed from the home, that could increase the risk of an overdose for that parent. So again, meeting them where they are and giving them those alternatives and reducing those barriers. As well as our crisis response, we know that is happening a lot in our community where EMS, law enforcement are responding to calls, and there is opportunities on how do we coordinate ourselves to be able to respond and help link people to those resources in that moment. And so speaking a little bit about crisis response, I think this has been something that's been talked about for years, and we really have some forward movement and collaboration with law enforcement and really looking at what are we already doing in the community and what's working, and then how can we enhance this? So within our community paramedic program, we recently have our mobile community outreach team. They are out there right now and working with various community partners that are doing the outreach work, and as part of that, doing some de-escalation work. So they might be meeting someone in a crisis, helping to resolve or reduce maybe the impact on others. But at times, we might need further support. If our community were to call 911, we're looking at having that opportunity that we can have community paramedics and law enforcement to respond, and then also having a mental health clinician available as needed. So there could also be law enforcement maybe responding to a call, realizing it is now maybe more behavioral health-related. They can also reach out to the mobile community outreach team to respond, and again, to help be that bridge to connect people to other resources and services. And so that our fatal overdose response team, that is something that we've been outlining and drafting and talking. And so we're in, getting close to that phase to really share a proposal. And what I want to highlight is all of this work is dependent on what is out in our community. What are the resources? What are the capacity of our providers? And again, how can we help make sure that we're breaking down any of those barriers, understanding funding resources, who is potentially being left out? So the continued work, but we are hoping that this will be getting launched in the near future. And the other piece that we want to acknowledge, the more that we are identifying people that are in need of treatment, we want to make sure that we, there are resources available. So ensuring that we're addressing some of those social determinants of care, those wraparound supports, what is it that that person needs for their own health and wellness today? And then also having funds available to distribute naloxone and other harm reduction materials, but also that communication, and as Tiffany talked about, reducing that stigma, telling those stories. So before I get into some of our financial considerations, I wanted to pause and just see if you all had any questions at this moment, and what has been shared so far. So to remind you all, we have opioid settlement funds, right, that are coming to our county. And right now, there are, there is a process looking at Wave 2 funds. We have Wave 1 funds, we already have a schedule of how much and when. There are conversations about Wave 2 funds, which I will share, but this is what we know today, the amount of funds that we are receiving. As you'll see, that 458 is what you all had approved for a budget amendment in fiscal year '23 that has continued to sustain many of our services. And then this slide is going to just share with you all some of those current services that are happening and, and the work that has already been going on in our community. We have the infrastructure that has been helping bring that coordination, to have that collaborative spirit and bringing people together to make these plans. And then the following are programs that are currently in place and were presented to you all within the budget. And I do want to take a moment and allow Tiffany to share about the community reentry team, and then I will take back.
Yeah, I think there was just some questions about what the community reentry team looks like, how does it work? How does it work with our MAT in jail services? And I am here to just present that information. Maybe about for the past five years, we've been working in the space to fill those gaps when it comes to justice-involved individuals. We have partnered with the sheriff's office and public health. During that time that the MAT in the jail, well, taking a step back, historically, there have been about three case managers, substance abuse professionals in the jail, and the jail medical team also has a clinician, a therapist that does evaluations and determines if somebody needs to go to the hospital for a voluntary commitment and that type of social worker needs. The three positions that we have contracted with historically through RHA, also with some funding from Vaya, who funds one of the positions, is to support our familiar faces works, identifying the familiar faces that come into custody, work with our agencies in the community to get a good plan in place. There's a staff member that looks solely at substance use disorder, all types of substance use disorder, and seeing about diverting them, so working with the judges to get them out of custody and into treatment, whether it's ADAC or SWAIN or one of our recovery providers. So they're screening, triaging substance use disorder, getting them into treatment, these folks. And honestly, a large portion of our population in custody have some type of substance use disorder. So the third position also looks at just providing screening for mental health, especially the ones impacted by the severe and persistent mental health, like schizophrenia or bipolar, making sure they're getting their medications and getting a good discharge plan. This team also does groups inside the jail. But what we noticed, so not only were opioid use disorder becoming more prevalent and trying to use best practices with MAT, but the folks in custody that maybe not qualify for MAT would be given a plan and then left, you know, they would be discharged with no support and follow-up in the community. So Public Health, the detention facility, Justice Services came together to come up with a plan. So currently, our current makeup of services is jail, Sarah Gaitan's team, they're looking at the, they work with the peer supports that are being inducted while in custody, and those peer supports provide follow-up to MAT providers in the field. There was a grant, and I believe it's sunsetting, with the Public Health Department for those who don't qualify for the MAT induction, but to getting those other folks connected to MAT services at the jail and at our local prisons that are in Buncombe County. Those peer supports work with that population. The community reentry team works with folks that may not, now, we can connect certainly to MAT, but also works with the greater population of those affected by behavioral health disorders. So there are two case managers and peer support that when somebody's released, they know to come to the 14th floor of the courthouse, or they can meet in community to get connected to resources. They make sure that they are getting into recovery houses. They're responsible for getting the medications, medical appointments, getting in with the provider. They work a lot with pre-trial because the judges oftentimes order treatment, and so making sure that they are making their appointments and just connecting them to getting driver's license or whatever those social determinants of, their social determinants of health are. In addition, that program manager oversees both the in, the in-jail team as well as the community reentry team. And then collectively, all the teams are working together. So there might be some connection in one person being seen by Sunrise and RHA, but they're coordinating together to make sure there's no duplication of services. That is, oh, and previously, this funding was through Dogwood Trust. We went in partnership with Public Health to make sure we had a robust reentry service. And so we've been funded with Dogwood funds for two years.
Any questions about any of the other items on maintaining services? There may be some minor adjustments in the budget amendment, just accounting for any COLA and just kind of running back through. COLA and just kind of running back through, so you may see minor changes, but this is what we're looking at based on current funding and what's ending on what we would need for fiscal year twenty-four, but then also giving you all a sense of what does this look like funding it yearly?
So just to kind of pause for a moment and capture what I think y'all are saying is, in, in recent years, all of these programs have been brought online through a combination of grant funding, county funding, various other funding streams. And what you're proposing to do is sort of pivot into a new approach where these, this is all really packaged and named as sort of dedicated programs that are responding to the opioid addiction crisis. And we are, and the question before us is, do we make a commitment of sustained settlement dollars year in, year over year so that we don't, once again, next year, find ourselves at the situation where one of these is on a funding cliff because grant dollars are expiring? So it's really sort of shifting from that more year-to-year perspective and saying, these are the strategies that we're ready to, these are some of the strategies we're ready to elevate and make more longer-term investments in with settlement dollars because they're really fundamental to our work.
Yes, I would call this our base level of service.
Yep.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but this was all with one hundred percent grant dollars. I don't believe there was any county dollars.
No, no county dollars.
There have been no county dollars to date.
Right.
So this is transitioning all this work that has been, there's all this very innovative work that's been piloted, et cetera, et cetera. We've got the data from it. We know it's working. We've refined these programs and we're ready to transition them into programs that are baseline and are funded via settlement dollars in an ongoing way.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
And this just gives you a sense when we apply just the wave one funding for maintaining our current services that are already out there and meeting those needs. And then this is showing, based on what we have seen and what is needed, potentially needed, what we are recommending as potential expansion of services. So the fatal overdose team, again, based on our ask from commissioners to be laser-focused on fatal overdose, have really looked at what are the opportunities and what do we need to really meet our objectives? So as you'll see, the expanded bridges to care, one, there was part of our community paramedic program that is doing the post-overdose response, medications for opioid use disorder that we do need to maintain. But then this is to expand this team by another team, so a three-person team that will cover twenty-four seven, and then a team of supervisors. We would look at bringing on supervisors first to start building out and working with the detention facility and the emergency department, and then bring in the additional three community paramedics. This would bring us to four community paramedics on shift twenty-four seven to respond to crisis, behavioral health crises, and to help link people to medications for opioid use disorder and other resources. This would also be an additional need for two vehicles for the new team and the supervisors along with supplies. And then again, as I mentioned, as we are identifying more folks that are in need of treatment, there is that recommendation that we provide some additional funds for evidence-based addiction treatment. We have found that we, there are community funds available, there are priorities, but sometimes there are eligibility gaps. And we've also found that we are surpassing a lot of what has been funded or allotted. And so then this gives us some wiggle room if near the end of the fiscal year, if there are no funds, if there are people that are not qualifying based on eligibility, we are able to scoop them up and make sure that they are getting that treatment or the other treatments that they may need or supports for their health and well-being. And then for data-informed responses. So to be able to really coordinate all of this process and the data, we felt like it would be important to have someone that has that medical substance use background that can really speak to that language and, and helps us define what are those measuring points that we want to gather and collaborating with all of the different providers in our community, understanding that medical language. We are looking at this potentially being a contract, maybe a short-term contract to really inform, help maybe give us that foundation on what, even as Tiffany had mentioned about overdose deaths and toxicology, really understanding that language and bringing that forth. But I do want to note that there has been conversation within public health that an epidemiologist could be a benefit to our community, that someone who has a public health background or able and trained in analyzing and collecting data and providing reports so that we can really understand trends and changes within our community and what that might mean. So again, we can maybe be a little bit more ahead of the game, understanding when new substances are coming in, how is it impacting and informing our response as a community. And another item that's been discussed is having a nurse navigation program within our 911 dispatch. So this request here is just for a feasibility study. This would be a partial, half of the full cost, so the full cost for this study would be fifty thousand, but is really evaluating our 2022 data, assessing what of those codes could have been used to a nurse navigation navigator and to understand what is the mapping within our community? Are there the resources to divert folks from the hospital? And so that we could see a reduction in EMS calls, and this will free up advanced life support to respond to those fatal overdoses. So it's an opportunity that I think will benefit our community, our 911 dispatch, and we'd like to dig in more and see if that is something that would be feasible and would help our 911 system. And then lastly, as we talked about our communication and outreach, we've identified that there could be a need for an additional position to do that intentional outreach, that coordination and messaging, someone who's familiar with the different cultures and connecting with those cultures to help them even share with us what are those messages that they want their community to hear. And along with that, having some media and engagement materials, having that available to, to support that work. And then lastly, increasing our naloxone distribution amount. You might have seen for maintaining, we did fund fifty thousand for this past year and increasing that to ensure that we are able to meet the needs of our community and have that life-saving medication and other harm reduction materials to help save lives. And so when thinking of expanding these services and maintaining our services, this is what we would be looking at based on just wave one settlement funds. So it would leave us with about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand for the end of this next fiscal year. If we were to consider wave two funds, which I believe we should be hearing this week if the companies are agreeing to the settlement, so then we will get more defined information. But I just took the total amount, divided it by the fourteen years, just to give an estimate of what we might be seeing. They could also be front-loaded and then titrate just like wave two funds. I've also, what you can see is kind of stepped up the cost over the years just to account for inflation. But this gives you a sense that with wave two funds, we can cover our current services and expand our services through fiscal year 2026. But one thing I want to bring back up is that we have not accounted for some of those root cause strategies or strategies to address the root causes. There is a potential that even minimal funds could help us make some progress towards these efforts, but that has not been included in what we have recommending today. And so our hope and ask of you all is to give us guidance on how we use these opioid dollars to expand the work that we are doing. And based on your guidance, we would include those in our budget, fiscal year twenty-four recommended budget for then adoption on June twentieth. And all of our expansion services would begin to be implemented on July first. So just a reminder, our current services will continue and maintain, they are established and working. We'd be focusing on the expansion during, starting July one. And that's all that we have and open for questions and feedback.
All right. Thank you, Victoria and Tiffany. Great presentation, a lot of great information.
I mean, I guess I would just start by saying thank you to staff for working through all of this. It's kind of a somewhat unique emergency situation with the crisis in our community. You know, my initial reaction to it when I saw it weeks ago in terms of the recommendations, you know, that the community paramedic expansion was, seemed like the biggest priority to me. It's already an important pillar of our emergency response. It's easier said than done to hire folks to do that, that kind of work. So I guess I would lift up as a, as a priority to, to start that process and support that process as quickly as, as possible because there's only, it's only beneficial work that they could be doing for our community from here on out.
Let's jump in, or, were you gonna go? To echo that, thanks to the, many folks who are in the room, and then I know many others who aren't in the room today, but have been working very hard on kind of coalescing this work and bringing forward, I think, a really bold and important multi-year strategy to respond to this. So just want to recognize and appreciate that work. And in terms of the questions that you all have brought to us, you know, I would certainly be in support of us moving as quickly as we can to approve funding for that set of expanded services and support with particular priority placed on item one, expanded bridges to care. And then that item two piece, it's called data-informed responses here. Within that, what I really see is bringing a lot of clinical muscle into the team, folks who have the, the expertise, the subject matter expertise, but also the licensure, the ability to kind of cross-talk across systems and help best support the county's efforts to sort of be nimble as we move between, you know, various medical systems. And against the backdrop of a rapidly evolving crisis, as recently as a few weeks ago, the federal government sort of established or named a new crisis related to trank. So we know, we know that this isn't going to be a static situation, that our needs will, that we will need to have a team that's sort of ready to be dynamic and nimble. And bringing that clinical team into the mix seems like a really, really great way to strengthen that, whether it's during the startup phase and then evolves into something else, I think time will tell. The pieces that are named under the equitable communication and outreach seem so critically important, and thank you so much, Tiffany, for your presentation on equity issues in particular. And, you know, would welcome staff's perspective and input on the timeline or on implementation of that. But my understanding, kind of looking at these slides, is that it, it seems like that priority one, or I'd love to hear from staff if that priority one would be ready to go as soon as July one and that priority, and if that priority two could go then as well and what thinking is on timing for number three. I did want to just take a second on the slide, the, I'm not sure what number the slide is. It's slide number twenty-two, recommendations of dual approach. Say that I think all the issues named here are so, so critical, and we know that there really is a crisis around mental health issues for youth right now that's showing up in many, many different ways. It's showing up in the lives of families, it's showing up in our conversations with schools. And I think we know that unmet mental health needs can be one of the things that, that ends up leading to addiction. So a question I had was whether we've had an opportunity to map the, map the strategies identified here against other funding streams that the county's doing. I'm thinking in particular of some work like the JCPC is doing that, that capture some of the things named in early intervention. I'm thinking about programs that we're funding through strategic partnerships and other initiatives, work we're funding through the schools focused specifically on behavioral health. And just wondering if we could kind of get a sense of what funding the county is allocating towards some of these strategies. Number two, I'm not having as many immediate ideas on employment-related services, but in terms of recovery housing, as we're thinking about, I think, all kinds of work in the housing space and some of the housing projects already being funded, in fact, whether we are, in fact, already devoting some funding towards this. So I guess my thinking would be that we move forward and prioritize what's named in the fatal overdose, the fatal overdose response team strategies that are ready to go and do that as expeditiously as we can. And my, my personal perspective as individual commissioner would be that if that absorbs the entirety of the funding for the next three years, that's, that's funding well-used. And hopefully, what it helps us do is not just stabilize, but reverse the trend so that we're actually seeing fewer people die and helps our community achieve, be at a plateau point where we might be able to better invest in these more holistic solutions. But I, but I do think it's worth naming that we actually are investing in many of these solutions. It's just we may, we may not be kind of talking about them under the same conversation. Whereas the other body of work that's described here is very unique and very sort of precisely responsive to overdoses and overdose deaths, if that makes sense. So when we think about settlement dollars and the highest best use of settlement dollars, I tend to land on the side of those strategies that are most directly focused on the things that we know are reducing overdoses and deaths right now because of the, the crisis around that. So just bringing my perspective in, but again, just want to close out with a tremendous amount of gratitude and appreciation for all the hard work going into this. And I think the work happening in Buncombe County really will be a pace setter at the state level and even the national level as we look at how communities are embarking on engaging the whole community in the conversation, but then really moving forward with the actual allocation of both wave one and wave two settlements.
Did you understand that? I'll also echo that to add thanks to y'all for the hard work here. I know this is a, it's a very interesting intersection of a lot of different conversations that we're having, a lot of different groups working on different pieces of this. I would echo my excitement about the expanded bridges to care portion and particularly the medical substance use professional or epidemiologists, since that, I think that would inform a lot of the work that we're doing. I really see that being valuable. Some of the long-term approaches that Jasmine, Commissioner Bichar, I mentioned, I think are taking, some of those conversations are taking place in the JCPC and the Behavioral Health Justice Collaborative. And maybe we need to have those conversations and elevate that kind of work that's going on there and talk about those, since I see a lot of intersection between what we're doing there and what we're doing here. But in terms of acute laser-focused response to, response to saving lives, I think that what you put before us on the expanding services portion is excellent. And that would be my, my suggestions. I think the third priority is also good, but those immediate options to save lives would be the ones I'm most excited about. All right. Any other feedback from commissioners at this time? All right, again.
Just one, yeah, County Manager Pinder, can, I just want to make sure we close the loop. Is there anything further you need from us in terms of feedback or recommendations?
No, I think with, the one thing that you did ask that we did not answer was on the timing of how quickly we can bring things online and get hired. We are, I will look at Taylor now to see if he has any people in the pipeline as he's thinking about the community paramedics. But our plan was that we could start advertising that as soon as the budget was adopted and hopefully, we can bring some folks online early July. But we are struggling with hiring, so I'm not sure that would happen. There's Claire, she can actually tell me as well if she has any people in the pipeline that can fill some of these roles early in July. As Victoria said, we looked at a contract to bring on someone quickly, on a medical professional, to bring that person in quickly. So our goal would be that we can start as quickly as possible with the, with the budget passing on June twentieth, we could start advertising shortly thereafter to have someone start July first on those two. Then on, on the outreach piece, that might take a little bit longer because we would have to advertise for that. So our goal would be if you do approve the entire slate of recommendations, that we can start that person maybe by September, later in the year, three months or so into the year. We want to give ourselves some time to find that position. What I'm hearing is that you approve, I'm not, if there are other commissioners, I'm hearing three commissioners say yes. So if you guys are absolutely on board and give me consensus, then we can move forward with putting this in our budget conversation.
You can move forward putting it in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I thought you said you were going to put it in the budget. I mean, if that is the plan, is to put this all in the budget, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, right.
Right now, the maintain is already part, is we took them funding from the grants and maintain it with our, with the opioid money, so that part is in there. The expansion piece- The expansion piece, the last three, which is expanded to community paramedics, the data-informed responses, and a community and outreach.
So, just from a process standpoint, like, we're not going to vote on something here, right? So, but I don't hear anybody objecting to it. I mean, if you need us to vote on it, I mean, I would, if you're going to start doing a search for the personnel, I mean, I would, I would encourage you to start doing that right now, because I think this is, I don't hear any objections to it. And if you need us to vote on it, let's put it on the agenda tonight by consensus and vote on it if that's what's needed to move forward. Would be, would be my suggestion from a process standpoint, if a formal vote's needed. But I hear nothing but support for these ideas, so.
I do believe that we would take the time to write it up and bring it back to you to vote, but, which would be on June 20th was the plan. I don't hear any negatives, so that's the plan would be to move forward with that and have it ready to go. Give us time to get our app, our job descriptions and everything ready to go.
Okay.
Just building, what Brownie said just reminded me, and correct me if I've got this wrong, but with the new homeless services job we're posting, did we do something that enabled some of the backend stuff to start prior to the actual approval of the funding for that position? Like, is there a way to, for instance, just thinking about the challenges that we know exist around hiring, et cetera, is there a way that staff could begin those processes prior to June 20th?
Yes, and we would actually be thinking about what does that job description look like, and getting that posted and everything ready so the HR piece can be working on. So we're getting head nods, so yes, we will start working on that.
Yeah, great.
So you got what you need from us?
We did.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all, we appreciate your important work and this important effort. All right, commissioners, the last item on our agenda is a discussion about the board meeting schedule. And Avril, have you, did you want to?
So we can start.
Kick us off on this, or, I'm not sure who gets us started on this one.
Commissioners, as folks are walking out, I do want to say thank you to the team that worked on the equity map. I see Heather, she's here in shoes. But, but thank you for that team. They did a phenomenal job of pulling that together. And the command group that has been working on fatal overdose, I see Ryan Cole and Taylor in the room, and Claire is here as well, they have been, and Stoney, they have been meeting weekly, trying to make sure that we get our hands around this crisis and that we can move that forward. So thank you for that team as well. And now if you will pull up the slide deck. So commissioners, at our last meeting, this came up, and Commissioner Wells and Martin both raised a question, I'm looking at our schedule. So before you is just a slight option that we can discuss tonight and change or stay as is, but really it's around asking, if we did move to a day option, we would recommend that that be the first Tuesday, and we can get in and get out, so you can still have your subcommittee meetings, and that would not be impacted. On the night meetings, if there's still a subcommittee at 1, we could start our briefings. Our goal would be to have a short briefing on that first meeting, so the briefing would be from 9 to 10, so just one hour. But the second meeting, the third meeting of the month, the third Tuesday, we will have a regular briefing, which could be longer and have longer items. The 5:00 PM would keep our public hearings, so we would have to make sure staff is planning and ready, that the community can still make some public hearings, depending on the nature of the meeting. We could have some public hearings as well in the first meeting, and again, that depends on the nature of what we would need to have. Closed sessions, the longer closed session items, we will try to put on that day meeting. And time-sensitive only closed sessions would be in that night meeting. And that would be the proposed schedule if you went to a day or night option.
Apart from bothering our PR team, is there any downside logistically to trying it, and if it doesn't work out, or we don't get the attendance that we're expecting?
I will look at the clerk or their, and their attorney, if there's any options, we've switched our schedules, have a meeting. If it doesn't work, we can always switch protocols again and policy, so, yeah. So if you wanted to give it a try, we would recommend that you give us some leadway to inform the public of the timing.
Well, I'll just say thank you to staff for looking into this and putting this together. I'm certainly open to it if others are.
And we do have a couple of commissioners that work, so I will let them get their feedback as well, see where we land.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking about this, and for my day job, I travel around the country talking to boards and commissions and city councils, and have seen everything from only morning meetings to night meetings to only meeting occasionally. So I guess, I guess what I've been trying to think about is like, how can we set up a system to where people that work and become members of this board can participate? And the same goes for the public, right? So are we maintaining flexibility for people from the public who have different life circumstances and work circumstances? And it seems like, I'm sure there's arguments on all sides, but it seems like a kind of a mix, like we see on this slide, is, is an attempt at making that happen. You know, I served on the planning board for like six years, and we only ever met in the morning. And so only people that could come on a weekday in the morning could ever participate. So, yeah, in terms of just like, practically speaking, just purely public comment, this gives people different times of the month and week to provide us physical public comment in this room. So, yeah, that's my, my poor attempt at an argument in favor of what we're looking at here.
I'm in favor of trying it and seeing what type of community response we get. Much like Commissioner Sloan, I think, if I'm interpreting his comments alongside mine, I think the larger concern is ensuring that folks across the community still have access to attending our meetings, to speaking of public comment and public hearings. As someone with a full-time job, in addition to this, you know, that is certainly a consideration, not only for myself but for future commissioners too. Certainly wouldn't want a daytime meeting to preclude someone from wanting to run for office and serve Buncombe County as a commissioner. And this could potentially do that. Not everyone is, you know, fortunate enough to have incredibly flexible work schedules to make that happen. So I would want to be very cognizant of that, that, you know, there's folks out there who want to serve, and we don't want to not give them that same opportunity that the seven of us have.
I'd also echo that, being bound to interesting day job schedules sometimes myself, and making sure that we include some folks who work night shift jobs, afternoon, 3 to 10s, so they at least have a chance to participate. I'd be open to seeing what both those look like, and I think we'll have some good instruction after the first attempt.
I mean, what's the worst thing? We can go back to what we're doing.
I, I'm also supportive of giving this a try, and I think the idea of creating additional space in the daytime for folks to be engaged there who might have, you know, for whom the evening or late afternoon meetings are actually not the best time to engage with public officials, maybe because they have, need to go home and take care of kids and get other things going on after, after work, but actually might have time during the day. I think, I think having different opportunities sounds good. And we'd also just share, like, if we, if we did have any, you know, now or in the future, if we ever had a commissioner elected to the board who simply couldn't make that work, then I think we would, we would definitely need to have a schedule that is viable for all elected officials. But if this sense of the board today is that this could work for everyone, then I think giving it a try sounds like a positive idea. So when would we start?
It's clear. So we don't have a first meeting in July because of the holiday, so that if you're interested, it could be that first meeting at a fiscal year, which would be, I believe, July 20th. That would give us time between now and July to get the word out and start doing that PR campaign.
So we would do this for July with the recognition that we just have one meeting that month, so that morning meeting sort of wouldn't happen in July.
Right.
So July, in a way, really wouldn't change, and then so the next month is when it would look like this. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Sounds fine to me. All right. Let the word go forth.
Do we need, we need to bring something back? So we would have to bring the policies back for the board to make that change, but we would get that done.
All right, so we'll vote on this at whatever.
In June.
Okay. All right, sounds great. All right, commissioners, that's everything that's on our agenda for the briefing meeting, so let's adjourn, and we will reconvene at 5 o'clock for the regular meeting.